Notes here by given that meeting the city council committee on government committee and economic development proposals, the committee of the whole will be held on Monday, February 27, 2023 at 6:00 PM to discuss haunted happenings 2022, the briefing conversation. We'll go up here in data on visitors, revenues and expenses, as well as collecting feedback from organizers, programmers and operation personnel of the 2022 Halloween season. This meeting will be held in person in the mayor Gene Lebec Community Life Center at 401 Bridge Street and via remote participation in accordance with chapter 107 of the Act of 2022. In person attendance, the members of the public will be permitted and the public may participate, listen and/or view this meeting along progress via the remote participation platform zoom through any one of the following ways. Please click the link below to join the webinar, password 544988 or telephone webinar ID 81908880541. The subcommittee meetings are held to take action for the purpose of making recommendations to the full council. In person, in attendance today, we have members of the committee councillor Merple and councillor Morcilla from the committee of the whole, we have councillors Varela and Troszuski. Just a note for the folks who are, sorry councillor president's here as well. Just a note for the folks who are here tonight, this is being recorded on that camera back there, so many of you are on camera right now, so just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. Also in attendance today, we have nearly the entire Salem city government back here, as I will name them one by one, but we have a lot of attendees who agreed to come in here. We appreciate their attendance. Tonight, so this is the intention here is, as was stated earlier, to provide public feedback and just some transparency around haunted happenings. This is, there's going to be an opportunity for public testimony, but at its heart, this is a committee meeting, so we'll start out with some presentations from some of our guests. We'll have questions from the council here. We will take public testimony. My intention is that this will last roughly two hours. I don't want, if people have things to say, I want to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak, just as with any meeting, ensure that we are avoiding personalities, keep sticking to the issue and ensure that everyone gets an opportunity to speak. So with that, I will welcome mayor, acting mayor Bob McCarthy, who will come up and sort of just give an overview of what we have to expect.
Which one of these works? Do I have to turn one of them on?
So there are two microphones up there, only one is working, the other one is for SATV, so that's a little bit like a press conference.
Nice.
If everybody, I know that everyone has they come up, if they can sign the sheet up there, I think the city club will be very appreciative as names and addresses that always come through in the, in the audio.
Also, is this thing working? Sounds like it. Oh, good.
This is the better, this is the better mic here. Unfortunately, this is very faint, but this will come across.
Well, we all, we all know me, I tend not to need a microphone sometimes, so thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. Bob McCarthy, acting mayor, and tonight, we're going to be talking about a topic that I'm glad we're talking about now, Halloween. I'm glad we're taking it up in the month of February as opposed to September. And I will just say that from spending 15 years on this side of the issue, I want to tell you that you alluded to them, but they're all sitting right here, all the department heads, and I can't tell you what kind of a fabulous job they do during the month of October. I've, I've had two briefings, if you will, relative to October, and I can say without a doubt that it's, I've been reaffirmed of the fact that our public safety personnel and everybody who works for the city has everyone's total interests at heart and that they are reactive in the moment to make sure that we are safe, but they're also proactive in their approach as to how they deal with the month that has become Halloween and also the fact that how they debrief amongst themselves and then turn that around into how they're going to implement their best practices in the following year. Anyone who has been around for an extended period of time knows that Halloween just didn't happen overnight. Halloween took many, many, many years to evolve, and I will say that former mayor Driscoll, when she first came in, understood that if Halloween were to continue to evolve, we needed to figure out some way to best manage it. I think that it has become something very large to manage, but I will also, I'm not, I don't like to recognize individuals, but I will recognize Alan. Where is Alan? Hi, Alan. Anyone who knows Alan Tarkowski over the last, as I've got to know in over the last 15 years, we all joke about it. Alan walks around for the month of October carrying two cell phones, two walkie talkies, and in some cases, two packs of cigarettes. And I say that endearingly because if Alan has seen Halloween evolve over the last 15 years and Alan has been working hand in hand with the departments, and I've also been told by the police and fire chief, if there's one person in the city that can call them up and actually make a suggestion that they should do something, it's Alan. I think they would probably, when it comes to around October events, I don't care who's, who's in this role, I think they would defer to Alan first, and I think that speaks volumes of the way she's been able to work with the department heads, but let's be 100% honest, it's the department heads, it's the police chief and the fire chief that have the ultimate say on our protection during the month of October. And I think that, as you'll see during some of the presentations and some of the questions that they do because of the, of the, of what they've learned over the years and how they've managed to roll that into programming and into safety protocol that has everyone's best interests at heart. The big question that has, comes to everyone's is, you know, is it worth it? And sometimes it's very hard to put a hard number on something such as big as October. I mean, obviously, the finance team has put together, puts together some slides that will show that the, the revenues have out, have outpaced expenditures traditionally over the years. This past year, they did creep closer to each other, there's still a separation, but with, but what was also asked of this group, of which we were able to pull some of those numbers together, we also feel very comfortable in saying that when you look at the increased hotel motel tax and, and the tax revolved around, what's the word I'm looking for, short-term rentals, that those numbers last year, in combination with the increase in meals tax, we're pretty confident in saying that the, during the month of October, the, the city netted an additional $200,000 relative to hotel motel slash meals tax on top of all the other revenues that you'll see broken out. I think that it also speaks to the commitment of everybody in this room, that all, all our department heads are here to represent and be available for questions because they realize what the importance of this month is to the city, but also realize that at the same time, we're here to listen because we, we've, we understand that from our conversations I've had with the department heads, that we do better when we listen and understand because we are trying to figure out, as everyone else is, how to navigate the month of October. And I think that we do a really good job, but I'm not saying we're perfect. And I'm, I was placed in this position by all of you just eight weeks ago, and I don't care who's standing here in front of you, that person has to, the person as mayor has to sit, stand up here and represent their, the department heads that have been assembled in their work, in their work ethic, and they do a fabulous job on behalf of all the citizens of Salem. But as we stand here tonight, we're going to be asked a whole bunch of questions and we're going to answer them to the best of our ability, but at the same time, we're also cognizant of the fact that we're here to listen and learn as well, and that's why we're here to do. But I will say that we do listen, we do learn, and we have learned for the last 15 years that I've been on the council and the last 15 years that I've seen the different departments, it doesn't matter who's running the departments, how they've evolved over the last 15 years to try to make Halloween as safe as could be. Anecdotally, I'll just use this last example and I'll open up the floor is during the height of COVID, we basically stood up and said Salem's closed, COVID's in effect, there's nothing here, there's no events, there's nothing going on, there's no balls, there's no psychic fears, there's nothing happening. That year, 500,000 people showed up. Last year, we saw our 4% increase over the year before in the amount of people, and a lot of that, some of that had to do with, we like to call it the hocus pocus effect. The hocus pocus second movie came on, so plus with coming out of COVID, there was an increased amount of people who wanted to travel and they wanted to travel locally, meaning the shorter distances, but outside of their comfort zone, they were coming more, we saw more coming from the New England communities. And that contributed to what we called the probably critical point around the long weekend in October, and then we really put out the message that if you don't, if you do not have, if you don't have a reservation, you don't have a ticket and you haven't figured out a way to get to Salem yet, please try to figure it out before you get here because you're going to be waiting in two lines, you're going to be waiting in a line for two hours to try to get a basic meal at a restaurant. So I think that message during the second part of the month was heard. We also incorporated additional ferry service, which helped contribute, we added, we work with Keolis early, tried to get them in board early on to add more trains, which they did towards the end of the month, which I think resulted in us seeing less of an impact traffic-wise, but still having the volume of people. So we're going to, we're going to learn from those examples, but I just want to thank the committee for the ability to come up here and address you first and allow it to be opened up to everybody that's here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCarthy. I'll go back one slide here and just let you know what's going to happen here tonight. So that was the overview from Mayor McCarthy, we have financials from Anna Friedman next, online marketing from Kate Fox, committee questions, and then we'll have public comment at the end. So with that, we'll bring up Anna Friedman to talk through the financials. I want to really appreciate Anna for going through these for us a little while, so it wasn't easy.
Can folks hear me okay? I tend to not be very loud. Okay, I will do my best to talk louder. I've been sick as well, so it's going to be a little bit harder for me to, to shout. I just have a couple of quick slides and happy to take questions, of course. I'm Anna Friedman, I'm the finance director for the city of Salem, and if you really can't hear me, please just wave, so I will try to, can't hear me at all, okay, maybe can I brawl that one? Thank you so much. Okay. So I just have, oh, this is much better. I just have four slides to walk through with folks, a couple of slides at the beginning on expenses and revenues, looking back at October of this past year, and then also putting those in context with some other, with some historicals so that folks can, can see how that compares with more recent history. So, and I will say, this is not, you know, necessarily 100% perfect of every possible cost that the city incurs, even just today, I was having a conversation with a department head and we thought, oh, you know what, that's not in our modeling for, for haunted happenings, we should add that in. But this is traditionally what the city has collected annually in terms of categories from departments following haunted happenings to sort of assess where we landed with costs. So I'll just walk through quickly the categories that we typically look at. So of course, our public safety expenses in terms of crowd control, keeping folks safe during haunted happenings, the cost is up there on the screen, a little over $352,000 this past October. Of course, public works overtime, keeping, you know, keeping the city clean, fuel costs, signage sweeping, moving barriers, a little over $147,000 this year. Portable toilets, a cost that has certainly gone up the past couple of years, trying to maintain, you know, proper public health, especially following COVID-19, so that was over almost $72,000 this year, and that was up from almost $58,000 last year. Shuttle buses, of course, trying to mitigate traffic in and around the city, that cost, we've been making some investments there, and so that has increased as well over the past two years, and so we spent $32,000 on shuttle buses this past year. Additionally, the city annually spends costs on fireworks, other entertainment expenses, a little over $10,000 this past year. Pioneer Village has some specific costs related to programming than it does for haunted happenings annually, $6,500 this past October. We have some costs related to inspections that the health department does, you know, around $1,600. And then we have some miscellaneous costs typically just for decorations and other things like that around the city. And so overall, our cost this past October, we're at $623,101.45. As I said, I really, that covers most of the city's costs directly attributable to haunted happenings, but I'm sure that there are a few things, like I said, we noticed a couple costs today in one department that hasn't traditionally been in our model that I think we're going to start including as well. So those are our costs from this past October. If we could go to the next slide, I can speak to the revenues that we've been seeing. So, and just a quick note before I begin diving deeper into these revenues, the meals and rooms excise typically has not been included in these estimates that the city compiles in its model, as those are sent to the city on a quarterly basis, and so those are reported from the state back to the city quarterly. They don't break that out by month, we can request that, sometimes they will give us that, sometimes they won't. I have put in a request for this year, I haven't received a response yet, so if I do get a response, I'd be able to provide some more granular information there, but the mayor and I have done some estimates, as he's just spoke to, to try to give some folks some clarity around how meals and rooms excise relates to this. So I just wanted to caveat that before talking about these other categories of revenues. So the city took in a little over $49,000 in licensing for vendors. Of course, parking is a huge contributor to the revenues that we see annually for haunted happenings, both for lots and meters and also from the parking garage, and we also take in revenue at the office as well. Just want to briefly speak to the method we use to come up with what those estimates are, and so we, we look at an average, the monthly average from the prior fiscal year, and then we look at October, and then we take whatever that variance is, we try to get a baseline, and then we basically then attribute the rest of that to haunted happenings. And one thing that I will note, that I think maybe is sort of potential for conversation, typically this model has been primarily for mostly October-based costs, but some September costs are creeping in there, I think as more folks are coming in earlier and earlier, and so I think we're doing some reflecting internally about like, where's this, where does this begin, where does this end? And so primarily, historically, the city has mostly been looking at an October monthly cost for these, but I think we're going to start trying to kick the tires a little bit more and make sure we're capturing everything. Pioneer Village brings in some revenues, of course, that we attribute to haunted happenings. We bring in health inspection fees as well from vendors, that was a little over $6,000. And then our, our, our single service vendor for the Fiesta, $40,000, a little over $40,000. Food Truck Festival, $18,000 sponsorship fees that we were able to receive this year, $11,000. And then we have some miscellaneous related to permits and a few other small things, just $859. And so all in this year, and of course, as I said, not including meals and rooms excise, the city brought in $681,293.97. Additionally, the city also took in $10,400 in fees that are deposited per ordinance to the Salem Common Maintenance Fund. That's not reflected here because that goes to a separate fund, very specific to maintaining the Salem Common, so that was in addition, and that's, as I said, for a specific purpose, so not reflected here. And then I'll go to the next slide just to show folks, how does this fit, you know, historically with what we've seen over the past several years? So as you can see, this goes all the way back to 2008. Typically, our revenues have exceeded expenses, as the mayor, as Mayor McCarthy noted, and then you get into more recent years and things get a little, a little bit more different. And so just want to briefly point out, we have a bit of an outlier in the FY18, FY19 timeline there. So in FY19, we had some, we had a big jump up in what the witch house brought in that year. I unfortunately wasn't with the city to know what specific programming generated that revenue that year, but it did jump up a bit more than usual. Our parking also jumped up a bit more over that, that year than the prior year, and additionally, we had some inspection fees that were modified after that year, and so that's why we had that bit of a jump up. It also kind of jumps out as well because soon after that, COVID-19 hit, so it's jumping out on the screen when you're looking at it there. So the, the dip, of course, is October of 2020, when there weren't as many, while we hadn't, still had quite a few visitors, we did not have as many visitors as a usual year, we weren't doing the type of programming we normally would do, so the expenses and revenues, of course, were down. And, and to read this, it's probably small and a little bit challenging for folks to read, so the blue line is expenses, the orange line is revenues, and so as long as the orange line is above the blue line, the city is, is sort of, you know, covering its costs. But as you can see more recently, particularly post-COVID, that margin between our revenues and our expenses is getting thinner, as, as again, as we noted, the meals and rooms excise aren't, is not on there, and so that, of course, helps, but that's always been not on there, and so it's just a note that particularly the costs around things like portable toilets and other, you know, public health mitigation measures that we've been doing and just managing the crowds are, are causing our, our margin there to become a bit thinner than it had been in previous years. And, next slide, please. And this is just another visualization of that, it's the trend of that net between what the city has spent and what the city is bringing in. Again, the meals and rooms is not included in this, in this chart, since we're not able to break out by every month because we just don't have that. And so as you can see, the trend line is that that margin's been getting thinner over time, and so the city is investing more funds, and while our revenue is going up, the expenses are just escalating at a bit of a faster pace than, than what revenues have been recently. And so that, that's what I have, just to quickly give a quick overview, and happy to take questions if appropriate at this time.
People hold the questions to the very end.
Great, thanks.
I'll note also that councillors Watson, Dominguez from the, the committee have joined us. And next, we have Kate Fox. Kate, you want those microphones as well?
Yeah, probably. I have a few slides this evening. I'm Kate Fox, I'm the executive director of, uh-oh, I'm the executive director of Destination Salem, it's nice to see everybody again. First, for context, I want to remind everybody what Destination Salem is. We are a destination marketing organization, are a DMO, we are an independent nonprofit and a public-private partnership that receives financial support from both the city of Salem and the Salem business community. Destination Salem promotes year-round travel to Salem and through our marketing and public relations strategy, which includes the Salem City Guided Map, Salem.org, the Destination Salem app, as well as our haunted happenings marketing. Next slide. You went too far. I think there was one. Nope, you didn't, never mind, sorry. So marketing Salem Haunted Happenings, which is of course why we're here this evening. Destination Salem uses the revenue generated by the Salem Haunted Happenings brochure advertising to promote travel to Salem in October. Over the years, our messaging has evolved, and today it focuses on best practices for visiting, planning ahead and using public transportation. When I first came back to Destination Salem, we were laser focused on family-friendly marketing and have several years of brochures that leaned into October and haunted happenings as a family-friendly festival and celebration, and now we are really all about plan ahead and know what you're doing before you get here. The brochure is printed in June and distributed from July through October while supplies last, and we invest in advertising in September and October that promotes requesting the brochure and planning ahead. So as Mayor McCarthy said, Haunted Happenings celebrated 40 years in 2022, so it's been growing organically and with marketing, not only from the city and Destination Salem, but also from all the businesses here who rely on haunted happenings for their, their annual revenue. So next, we use social media and the Destination Salem app. We use Twitter, Instagram, Facebook and TikTok, these are all important tools for real-time promotions and communication. The app contains everything that we put on hauntedhappenings.org, including events FAQs, and it allows us to send push notifications for public safety, traffic and event updates. Actually, met a visitor on Saturday who's from Delaware and was not here in October, they came in September, and she had the app and she loved getting the push notifications and knowing that the parking was full at 10:00 AM. Our haunted happenings marketing budget on the next slide, haunted happenings marketing represents 15% of Destination Salem's annual budget and in fiscal '23, and 8% of our annual budget in fiscal '22. And marketing, as I said, is paid for entirely by the business investment in the haunted happenings brochure and website. So you can see, if you can see, we spent $5,000 in paid advertising, $3,000 in distribution of the haunted happenings brochure, $12,000 in creative services, $20,000 in distribution, postage and delivery, printing and reproduction was up to $85,000. The cost of paper is incredible, it's one of those escalating expenses, and the website we spent $10,000 on with Spurling Interactive, which is a local business here in Salem. So again, this is, Destination Salem is not a city office, we're an independent nonprofit, but I'm happy to share these numbers with you. And then I just wanted to show some of our advertising from the last few years, and the next slide, you have four years of ads to, when we place, these are all examples of digital advertising. When we place our digital advertising, we use, we do search engine optimization, we also use Google AdWords and other online outlets for advertising, and some of these, I have seen feedback online saying Destination Salem has way too much money to spend on advertising in October. I saw their ad on CNN.com, that is through Remnant Rates, and that's part of our Google AdWords campaign that we do, so we are not actually buying direct through CNN or any of the major websites, Boston.com, Boston Globe, it's all being done through wholesaling and remnants through that Spurling Interactive places for us. And we also do the blast with different publications. These are some of the examples of our ads in 2020. We started with whimsy and then we escalated to no whimsy, and as the, as Mayor McCarthy said, about a half million people still came in that October despite the messaging that we didn't have any program for them. I think I have one slide left, yeah. Sorry, I knew I shouldn't have stapled this. So public relations, Destination Salem uses PR to promote planning of a visit for Salem Haunted Happenings and convey best practices. Most of our PR during October is reactive, we field requests from media who are coming to Salem, and our proactive PR is done throughout the rest of the year, including promoting of haunted happenings. So haunted happenings is one component of the year-round marketing effort that we do on behalf of Salem, and we do have a PR agency that we use for this, and they were on board in 2020 when we needed to partner with the city on the crisis, crisis communications. So the benefits of Salem Haunted Happenings, I just want to make sure that this is very clear for everybody, jobs. Haunted Happenings employs more than 1,000 full and part-time jobs in October alone through our tourism industry. The indirect impact of tourism to Salem, in addition to the direct revenue that's generated via taxes, tourism's indirect impact locally and regionally is enormous. Travelers go to grocery stores, gas stations, dry cleaners, dentists, pet stores, et cetera. Tourism businesses in turn support vendors of all sizes and scopes, including laundry, cleaning supplies, contractors, consultants and artists. And next slide. October tourism supports tax revenue. The local option hotel motel tax five-year average is $987,575. Quarter two, which includes October, the five-year average is $400,000 or 30% of the annual hotel motel tax. And the local option meals tax five-year average is over $1 million. Quarter two, which includes October, five-year average is $345,333 or 40% of our annual meals tax revenue. So it might not be included in the report, but it's included in everything I do, and that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
I want to thank the, thank the presenters for coming up here and giving those presentations. I guess, so, can you guys, okay. So we are going to turn it over to the, the council for questions right now, although councillor Cohen has joined us for the record. And I guess I'll get it started. Anna, I really appreciate seeing those, those numbers laid out that way, I think that was something that was a frequent question for a lot of councillors, particularly in the midst of October, when we were just seeing the influx that we got. I think as, at least for me as a downtown resident, and there are a lot of other downtown residents here tonight, the thing that we residents here tonight, the thing that we constantly tell ourselves year after year is, you know, it's inevitable and we're only human and we get sort of this frustration with, at some point, maybe mid-October, where when it, when sort of the novelty wears off a little bit, we're just trying to get our kids to soccer practice. The thing that we tell ourselves is, you know, this is, this allows our neighbors to, to keep their doors open and it keeps restaurants open year-round. It gives us things in Salem that we might not get otherwise if we can just put up with it in October. And I think, you know, for a lot of us who got to a point this last year where it was, we were starting to question that, whether that's controllable or not, I don't know. Is there a way that you or Mayor McCarthy are able to give us some sort of a, to quantify everything that was not included in this? The impacts, is there a way to estimate the impacts of haunted happenings year-round on the community? I think Kate alluded to that a little bit, but is there, is there things that as a community we should look at and think about as benefits from haunted happenings that we're just not seeing in these numbers?
I told the chief I was going to play with the volume buttons. So I would think that some of the things that we've been looking at over the last couple of weeks that haven't been captured. I had a conversation with parking and traffic, resident sticker parking violations during the month of October. The total was somewhere close to 2,000, is that right Dave? 1,880 something, Dave, something like that? So, and how that quantitatively works out as opposed to the rest of the year, we're not really sure. That money goes directly into the general fund. Then with regards to toes, there were more toes during the month of October and we have to figure out a way to interpolate that out over the rest of the year. Those are, those are two areas where we look at intangibles. Increased revenue that we receive from the ferry, the ferry revenue is not included. Also, the part that isn't included in any of it is the direct benefits to all our agencies that utilize some of the parking lots around town. I mean, we, we as a city put out for the Universal Little Steel Lot and we have different organizations from the, from the schools and from different organizations throughout the city, whether it's football or whatever. They, we put a cap on those, which is, we, we only allow them to charge $20 a day for the spots. But when you look at what some of the different organizations are doing at some of the other lots, you know, we, we think that maybe that might be something we could look at because those go, when you look at some of these, like anything from the band to the football team and everything in between benefits from the ability to be able to utilize that lot. And we don't capture any of that money, but if you would ask any parent of someone who's on the band or the basketball team and football team or your football, whoever it is that is utilizing some of those lots, those are indirect revenues that are captured, but we don't capture them on the city side. Am I, Anna, am I missing anything else? Sure.
One thing that I, I think I meant to mention, that I think is really important to not lose sight of in terms of particularly the meals and rooms that Kate mentioned in her presentation. Of course, so the, the numbers I went through in my presentation, those are really the revenues that we sort of take in and look to be offsetting the costs, the, the direct costs that the city has. The meals and rooms revenues, when those come in, as we're prepping for the FY '24 budget right now, and will be in front of the council in a couple of months to present that budget, I am looking at that estimate, I'm looking at what we brought in from this year, I'm looking at that, at those actuals from last year, and I am certainly working to maximize our estimates for next year. And that takes pressure off the tax rate that would be, we'd be setting next year, next, yeah, next year actually, for the city for FY '24. And so I think while the meals and rooms isn't necessarily baked into the model that I spoke to for the cost for the haunted happenings, those revenues when they come in, they're very meaningful for the city because I'm able to increase our estimates for our budget for next year based on those actuals. And then that's, you know, those are dollars that then we're not looking to, be looking to the residents for their taxes to have to, have to pick up for. So I think that's really important to keep sight of as well, that that's, that's a benefit that gets returned back to the community. That's one thing I just wanted to briefly mention. I think, and if there's anything else, I'm just trying to think of what, if there was something else you were saying in terms of like other intangibles or just?
Yeah, I guess I wonder about things like, it's almost possible to quantify the impact on business in that time period, how that stretched out over the rest of the year of this is able to stay in October.
I think that actually might get to something that Mayor McCarthy and I were just talking about today and might get to the, the, I was making in the presentation where because folks are coming in, I think more in September now and maybe we have folks coming in into November and, and because of the visibility and, and the people being familiar with Salem and even around the holidays, I think we were seeing more visitors than usual. And so it's, it's maybe kind of sticking. It's not just those couple of weeks in October. And so those businesses are, I think are potentially picking up more. We're losing some mic issues tonight. Kate might even have more information on that than I do, but I do think it's, and there's sort of a longevity effect, I think, because of the haunted happenings programming.
And one more question. If you can talk just briefly about the Kit Kat and Hulu sponsorships, is this the first time we've done that? First time I'd seen them.
I think so. And Ellen, I might need some help from you on this one, but I believe this is the first year that we've done those sponsorships, but they were based on agreements and just if they were able to, because of the advertising that we were going to be able to do with them, that we worked out an arrangement with them to, to provide those sponsorships, which was a thing. I know. I think we hope that those will continue.
Yeah, that was the first year we never had to pay for Halloween entertainment.
Ellen said that was the first year we haven't had to pay for that, or anything like that.
Thank you. I'll leave it up to the committee for questions. Council, Council myself.
Thank you, Chair. Anna, I have one question for you. You had pointed out in your, your expenditures that the portable toilets took a big increase. What about the other ones? How have they been historically? So the public works and public safety and shuttle buses, entertainment, Pioneer Village, the health inspections. Can you talk a little bit about that, those historical numbers?
Thank you. So for the public safety, oh, the chief's going to help me with this.
I have percentages based on years. It doesn't include the fire department, but I can speak to that.
Sure. Actually, I do want to speak to public safety first.
So Lucas Miller, police chief. In looking at what we spend in the police department for public safety during haunted happenings, which admittedly excludes the fire department, although we spend more than the fire department does, there's kind of two pots of money. One is simple overtime expenses and the other is operations expenses. The lion's share of those operations expenses go to outside agencies that we bring in to augment Salem police personnel. And I can tell you that in, in last year, so financial year 2023, we were down approximately 6% over the previous year. However, we were up approximately 29% over that COVID year, which represented kind of a baseline in previous years. So we're up about 34% over financial year 2020, which is to say Halloween 19. Is that, does that kind of answer your question? The why? So in terms of personnel costs, salaries and everything like that have been going up, but really the, the, the largest increase is due to the increase in people coming to Salem. The crowds have simply been bigger and required more police officers, more man-hours to, to protect them. So we're, in trying to compare apples to apples, we've been looking at the, when I talk about this, I'm talking about the essentially October, right? We could include the last weekend in September, the food truck weekend, and then even the first week in November this year was huge. And we actually spent, hired some, some officers on overtime to cover that as well. So it's difficult to make a, a one-to-one comparison, but overall expenditures go up in both directions. In other words, we need more police officers on a given night in October and then we need some police officers, as I said, in the, the first week in November and the, and the last week in September and, and possibly, possibly more next year.
And then I can speak a bit to DPW and if I, if the folks from DPW let me know if I go astray with any of this, but the DPW costs have also gone up quite a bit, sort of post-COVID. Based on the numbers that I have prior to COVID, those were closer to around $80,000 to $90,000. And as I mentioned in the, in the presentation, I believe that's up now, underneath here, over $130,000. So that has gone up quite a bit. I think it's just with the increased crowds, the additional cleanup, I think with the barriers, moving barriers around. Ray, is there anything else I'm forgetting?
The additional light towers.
Oh, the additional light towers that we have now as well. It's just a lot of sort of the crowd control and ensuring, you know, just safe streets and anything else, Ray?
The mats for the protection.
Oh, the, yep, yep. And the mats for protecting the common as well and moving those. So just overtime, overtime related to a lot of setup, takedown, moving things around. I think that's just, has increased a bit more with, with the additional crowds the past couple of years. And then for the, for the witch house, those costs have been generally stable. I'm not sure if Trish is here or she knows how that has evolved, but from what I've seen, those costs have been traditionally pretty stable. And then I'm just checking to see what else I might be missing here in terms of costs. The shuttle buses, those are newer, those are a newer feature to try to mitigate traffic issues. And so those costs have, you know, gone up from close to zero to where we are now at $32,000. Last year, those were around a little over $11,000. The entertainment fireworks expenses, those have been pretty stable. The portable toilets as well, you know, those have gone up substantially. A lot of that is, are the cleaning fees associated with the portable toilets and those went up, I don't know, Ellen, like 20% or something like that, even just over last year. So that was a huge increase related to, to the portable toilets. Just thinking what else is in here for costs? I think those are, that's the, that's the bulk of it. I think the, the main costs really are the, the personnel time that we just mentioned and then the, the shuttles, the portable toilets. And if there's, was there anything that I didn't cover? Okay.
If I could. I think the, when you look at the fixed costs of DPW, I think that also goes to the fact that we're living and learning and where we try to control the crowds and we're actually just, we're putting out more barricades to try to control their movements as a public safety issue. So when you see those costs escalate because of all those barriers that are buying and we're putting out in order to better control the crowds and they have the crowds flow where we want them to flow. As I alluded to earlier, in some of our follow-up meetings, we're actually considering some mitigation issues on pedestrian hall itself and try to create better flow down there as well, but those are, we're just having those initial conversations right now. And obviously those come, those come with an expense, but you know, safety is an expense we're not, we're going to take seriously, try to do as best we can to make sure those happen. But, but when you do look at some of those escalated costs, it's obviously around personnel, but also it's around the additional safety measures that we're trying to take. Keep wanting to turn the volume up.
Any questions from the council? Councilor Merkle.
Thank you, Chair Happer. I also wanted to echo what Mayor McCarthy had said, that the city leadership really does a great job. And I also appreciated how proactive they were. I heard a lot of, I hear a lot of conversations starting in November about what could be improved right, right out of the gate. And also a lot of the efforts that you're mentioning, it didn't go unnoticed. I spend a lot of time downtown and I get a lot of direct feedback from the small businesses, people out there performing. And I, I, on a regular basis to a lot of the city leadership sitting here and I appreciated the immediate responsiveness that I always received. And also the safety, the extra safety steps that were taken to kind of relieve the congestion on the pedestrian walkway and kind of spread out the crowds was helpful. Regular long-time businesses said they felt if there was any kind of emergency situation or somebody needed assistance, there was actually access there, even though the crowds swelled to huge numbers. So a lot of the reconfigurations and the efforts to kind of break that up and keep things a little safer, it had a very positive effect. I had a question for Kate about the figure she had set in one of the slides, just to confirm that I understood it correctly, about the tax revenue. It's a quick, it's a quick answer. I think one of them had that the local option hotel motel tax five years was like $987,000. So was that for each year and that's just the average? Was that revenue that comes in each year?
That was a five-year average.
Okay. So that comes up in each year and that's the five-year average. Okay. And then that's the same way to interpret the, the local meal tax. Okay. The $1.1 million was a five-year average. Okay. Thank you.
Further questions or comments from the council? Councilor Watson, though.
Thank you, Chair Happer. I have a number of questions, not all of which I'm, I'm, I'm not sure we'll be able to answer tonight, but I wanted to raise them because they have been raised to me on behalf of some small business owners downtown and some residents as well. So Kate, one of the numbers you shared was 1,000 jobs created between full-time and time in the tourism industry. Where did that number come from? I might just stand next to you because I have a number of follow-up questions.
You do.
Share.
Hi.
Hi.
So that number comes to us through the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism and they provide annual data. So that 1,000, and then I also did an anecdotal survey of our business community, got about 25% of the 155 businesses we work with in October that responded and it supported probably more than 1,000 jobs full and part-time in October.
Thanks. And this may not be a question for you, but perhaps for our Chamber of Commerce, but I'd be curious. I'd be, I'd be curious, is it working? I would be curious to know if anyone had ever done a data collection on the amount of funds lost by small businesses who are service-oriented, service-oriented in our downtown during October. I have not. Has that ever been, like, through an anecdotal survey?
No.
Main strength is also not in it, head. Okay.
I mean, there's anecdotal, but no.
But not through a collected survey or a data source of any kind that we've taken a look at? Okay. I'd be curious, right? Because I think some of what we hear is that there is perhaps a growing imbalance, right, of services or supportive service businesses in the downtown and some of the new businesses we see opening up and the expansion of tourism businesses in Salem, which let me caveat by saying, I'm not judging it as being good or bad personally. I, you know, right now, this is just a question on the table. Another question I had with regards to, has any estimation been done, perhaps Traffic and Parking can tell me, on the revenue, the revenue earned from the commercial lots that we legalized in fall? And any thoughts or plans looking ahead to regain any of that revenue that were charged anywhere from $20 to $16 a day per spot that we heard estimated from a downtown business rolled over three times in a day? And any plans to regain any of that revenue by furthering looking into additional satellite lots or increased shuttle services or increasing the price of shuttle services or any of that?
Any comment on that? That's my question.
No, I'm marking away.
Hi, Kate.
David, the Director of the Department of Director. I don't know the numbers about the private lots and how much they brought in. Each of the lots you committed, there were a total of 18, paid a $100 fee to get their permit. In terms of bringing additional revenue, I had, I've been discussions with Beth and Anna about charging for the shuttle and how that would work. about charging for the shuttle, and how that will work still being worked out. So that's something we're looking at, as well as choosing potentially some rights of garages. And as the mayor indicated, perhaps lifting that cap of the universal steel lot.
And no conversation around potential additional satellite locations or leveraging other public spaces we have in Salem outside of downtown?
We've had some discussions with private property owners along the way to the south, but we haven't had any takers on letting us use their facilities during the month. But that's not to say we won't stop trying to reach out and see if there's anything else we might work with somewhere.
Thank you. And my last kind of question is for the chief and actually Lieutenant Tucker as well, which is, I would just love to know, I know, first of all, let me say, I heard reports broad scale across way better enforcement than ever before, and a lot of gratitude to you all for all your hard work this year, particularly with, with rest parking and the lots and everything. Any numbers on what, how the success was of those downtown commercialized private lots? And were there any, any towing happening from there? Any issues to report? Any major successes you want to share?
So I don't have numbers about the private lots. I can tell you that we towed more than we ever have before. We, we use the state police particularly for that enforcement, and I think that's a, it's a good formula. We wrote more tickets, the police have wrote more parking tickets and towed more cars than any other year. So I don't know whether that's a measure that the private lots succeeded or that they didn't because the parking problems persisted. I can admit, it's a little off-topic, but I will say that the public messaging that we did about taking public transportation to Salem was, I think, our best, our best new move this year in terms of something we'll duplicate.
I agree, Chief. I thought it was really well done. I'd be curious to learn also if there was any, any numbers around enforcement of illegal use of private driveways and private personal residential lots in downtown? As I saw.
Just, just anecdotally, there were some violations on the private lots. As far as private driveways, I don't have enough faith, right? There may have been a few complaints. Were you speaking of people renting their driveway? I am not aware of any complaints about that business practice. Just complaints about parking lots that had gotten murdered from the city.
Thanks. That's it, Chair.
Councilor Barrow.
Thank you, Chair Happer, for not being a member of the committee. My question mostly probably guided towards Ellen and Kate Fox concerning the single-service contract for Haunted Happenings. Have any of our local food service establishments had the opportunity to bid on this contract? You know, I know as the mission statement of Destination Salem is, quality of life for Salem residents provide the greatest benefit for Salem taxpayers. I really see this as an opportunity for Salem residents employed by these establishments to have the opportunity for seasonal revenue, as well as also provide our guests visiting Salem to really experience the, as Destination Salem states, authentic New England experience. I really believe there should be a mechanism to make sure our local vendors have a priority concerning these opportunities. And many of our establishments have catering operations that leave dormant during October. You know, I, I don't really want to hear the excuse, which I've heard before, which is, our establishments don't have the capacity or capability of doing this. It's about starting a conversation early. So my question would be with whoever can answer this, how does that contract lay out as far as, for the single-service contractor? Hey, Ben.
Hello, everybody. I'm Beth Renner, I'm the City Solicitor. And the single-source food vendor RFP started many years ago when the health agent in his department was having difficulty when we had individual vendors, food vendors in particular, very difficult to manage. It was a suggestion from the health agent and others that we have one single entity to which they would be responsible for the permitting and the health and safety of our, of our residents and visitors who consume the food. So that's how that, the genesis of that. It is an RFP that is publicly advertised every three years. So we have had proposals from other entities, but what we're looking for is, is volume. And that might be a hindrance for folks. When I do get calls or when Ellen gets calls from local businesses, we do direct them to local vendors in time. And I did speak with the, the, I don't know if he's the owner, but of the Food Truck Festivals in America today, about, particularly about the beverage service, and trying to improve that so we can get some of our local breweries and the cider and who's involved this year coming up. So we're trying to kind of incorporate that a little bit better than we have. But that's the genesis of that. That's why it was a public health and a date. I can speak to that, but you can just give me a thumbs up if I get that right.
It happened before my time, but yes, I think it was a suggestion from the health agent because of the different companies managing 50 or 60 individual food vendors.
Thank you. If I may follow up on that. I really believe that if we start this conversation with our food service establishments as a collective, they may be willing to look at the opportunity for that. You know, I really think this is a missed opportunity for increased revenue for our establishments, as well as people employed that live in our city. So going forward, I really think that it's about opening up that conversation with our existing vendors. Because I know for a fact, I'm a part of this industry, that they want an opportunity to do this. So I think it's time to really open up the door and make sure that they have a seat at a table before choosing a single-service contractor, which, again, they fulfill a need for Haunted Happenings. I just think that we could do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a member of the committee. Also like to thank you for helping set up this meeting. I know this was a massive undertaking, so I appreciate this. I appreciate everyone, especially from the city that came out this evening to help provide feedback in February on Haunted Happenings, not in September or November. We've had some time to digest, so I think it's time to have these conversations. And to have them in a transparent manner. I understand that there have been a lot of debriefings internally within the city, but we, I don't want to speak for all of my fellow councillors, but I know I myself get lots of questions of, why did this happen to our content happenings? Or how was this planned? Or why was this? So to add a transparency level, I think is really important. So I really appreciate all of us out here this evening. I'm going to try to get all of my questions out at once, and then I will pass on the mic. First is just an overarching question for the city, so perhaps for the acting mayor, who owns Haunted Happenings? There are a lot of departments here this evening, which again, I appreciate everybody, especially when you look at the revenue and the expenses sheet. Everybody within the city, including residents, have a big hand in Haunted Happenings. Is there anybody overarching managing this? As the acting mayor noted at the beginning of this meeting, it is evolving and is becoming extremely difficult to manage. So who's doing that? And is there any plan for perhaps creating something of that? Or I'll just throw that out, that perhaps we need to look at that. We don't want to have as many gotchas as we had in the past or... To provide an avenue to provide feedback, I think would be really helpful as well. Okay, back. Just so the conversations open, I think is great. And having somebody own it is a good way for doing that. You know, we individually own our departments. We own the Salem, is it 400 that's coming up? You know, there are owners for all these different things, but there's no owner for Haunted Happenings, which is, one might argue the biggest part of Salem. And one of the reasons as to why Salem is, you get all of our other revenues. So I just want to put that out there as my first comment. My first question is around revenues, are two biggest areas of revenue outside of the hotel and meal tax, because that's a little difficult to quantify right now, is related to parking. We had the parking charge for our lots and our parking meters, and there was another one, I don't have it up right now, but those are our two biggest revenues. And one of our biggest expenses outside of staff, which we need to have, obviously, we need manpower or personnel, was the shuttling. So I'm wondering if the monetization of the shuttles, I hope that that conversation is continuing. My fellow councillor kind of touched on that, but outside of the shuttle, are there any other ways that we could perhaps monetize on those revenue areas or look in other revenue areas? Which will go to my second question of the sponsorships. Mentioning that that was the first year that this was chose or happened, where we had larger sponsorships. I'm curious how those were chosen? Is there a committee? I feel like that can really, I don't know how to phrase this, not get out of hand, but we want to be careful with how our sponsorships are chosen in the city and who we are allowing to put their name on Washington Street. That I think is really important and really needs to be something that is looked at. And I am just curious if there was an RFI or RFP put out for that. And then my third question around our expenses. A lot of our expenses, porta-potties, crowd control, lighting. Is there any discussion of infrastructure improvements so we don't have these expenses? So porta-potties each year are, was it like $80,000 this year? The new bathrooms that we put in down at the garage were $200,000, I think. So in two years, we're going to already spend that cost of possibly, can we just add more bathrooms downtown? So is that conversation going on? I hope it is, because that's my favorite topic. And the same with jersey barriers. So removing those every weekend, that's a huge DPW activity. Those are heavy. I'm sure those aren't easy to move, to close off the surface streets. I've seen dump trucks used to close off streets. Obviously, all cloud, crowd control measures. But there are other things out there that we can look at other cities to use. I was just at a very pedestrian-friendly city this past week, and they had ballers at the end of their streets that went into the ground. I'm sure we've all seen these in parking lots. And then they popped up when they wanted to make it pedestrian-only. Are those been looked at? Like, that would obviously save us from having to spend this expense. So a lot of these questions from different people on the mic over, but kind of go back to my first comment. This is evolving and a huge, I think, project that needs somebody kind of owning it. And I'm curious who's doing that? No, I don't know who wants to take that first there. Thank you.
I'll take it.
Thank you. The person who owns it is always sitting in this chair. It falls on the mayor's office. And it falls on directly on the mayor's office with all the support of all the departments. And in our meeting, we talked about it, and every department is to develop their lane. We'd like to, in the council changes, you've heard me say it 100 times, you learn to stay in your lane. So the departments all know what lanes they need to be in. They interact with each other, they cross over when they need to. And I will say that the one person outside of the mayor's office that owns Halloween in this case would be our special events coordinator, Alan Tarkowski. She has a better, she has the greatest understanding. And I've joked with her on occasion and asked her, because I was in someone's retirement party a little over a year ago, and she came in and said, "Councillor, I've reached 78%. I'm going to retire soon." And I said, "Please don't retire anytime soon. I don't want Ellen to leave. Ellen has more institutional knowledge than probably anyone." And at some point, we're all going to leave. And I think that at some point, we're probably going to have to sit Ellen down and try to debrief her to try to understand everything she's forgotten about Halloween and to make sure that we know what she's forgotten so we can incorporate that into whatever plans we have way down in the future. And someone over there with a badge, make sure that she understands that. I say that in all good jest, but Ellen, outside of the mayor's office and all the department heads, Halloween is, you know, day-to-day during the month. Would be Ellen, if anyone's been to a parking and rec. committee meeting, the person who's in there asking for all the permits for everything that goes on on the common and everywhere else is Ellen. Ellen is the person who is upfront. But it basically is, we said, there's probably, outside of the mayor's office, it's probably only one other person in the entire city that can get the police chief and the fire chief to pick up their phone probably on the second ring during the month of October, and that would be Ellen. And they will listen to what Ellen's suggesting, and they will listen to, and feedback with that, and move on those suggestions in order to best do what's right. I will say anecdotally, we have looked at different satellite lot options. And as I said earlier tonight, we're here to listen and learn. If someone has a suggestion of what they think would be the best situation that we could do to supplement what we're doing, obviously, we'd love to hear it. I will say that we also found out that there's a lot over in Peavy that is renting their lot and providing Uber services to get into Salem. So other people are trying it. I would say, when I was on the council years and years ago, we tried a satellite, we tried running a shuttle from the mall, Mosho Mall. Unfortunately, it didn't work because, as I like to refer to it, people are creatures of habit. They like to think, much like all of us probably don't want to admit, when we drive to the mall, we circle and try to find the spot closest to the store that we're going to because we don't want to park out in the middle of the lot and walk. So we try to, we circle, circle, and then go back. It's the same rationale when someone comes to Salem. They think that they're going to be able to drive right in the middle of downtown, find a place to park, and then they kind of circle back. But they also don't want to park at the mall and get on a shuttle bus and get stuck in traffic on North Street or Peavy Street or whatever other street. You think of, I'll pay David, but they're the one that come for Pete Abbott. I'm in Boston Street. Anyway, so that was what I would say from who owns it. What was the second question? How a sponsorship shows. Did we put, did that one offer our fusion or?
They didn't. Perhaps that's not the best word either, but...
I know that we partnered with them in order of...
They volunteered to...
Yeah, they approached us, I guess is the best way to put it. It wasn't, didn't go for our pity. They approached us with the opportunity. And that was vetted out internally. I guess we could look at that as an option. It's a good suggestion moving forward. I know that some of those sponsorship dollars revenues we use to... That was to offset the costs of the other event we did in December?
Yes.
The event in December down at Charlotte Ford Park, we used the sponsorship dollars for the Halloween events to run that event. That was free to the public, so.
Fireworks also.
And the fireworks also.
In 20 years, we've never really gotten away with not paying for a stage, a large stage and a, and a huge entertainment venue up at that corner. Even when we had the partner with the radio station.
I think what Ellen's trying to say is, if I can, but Ellen, if you want to come on. What Ellen's trying to say is that this is, I mean, as we look at the, how we offset revenue costs to make sure that the haunted happenings isn't running at what we refer, any resource as a deficit, we look at ways to be creative and to come up with alternative ways of funding things that we, as a city, decided that helps with the operation of Halloween with regards to controlling people and giving people opportunities for entertainment and whatnot to keep them entertained. I think it's one of the biggest complaints that we've, we hear at the visitor center is they get here and they want to know what their kids can do. So we try to make sure that they, there's all sorts of different opportunities, whether it's around entertainment, music, whatever it is that they have those. And so we look to partner, have those opportunities to partner with them. And the third question, I'm sorry, councillor.
So it's going to be over one?
Oh, okay. You keep me on point, thank you.
Around them who own the providing feedback. I know that there is the resident survey, but if there really is, is there any other kind of form of providing feedback on Haunted Happening? Kind of like this, really?
Well, this is, this is why I think this is a unique opportunity. And as I stated in the meeting, I think we're here to listen and learn. Someone alluded to the fact that, I think it was councillor Watson felt, what do we do about the business community that isn't directly involved with Halloween, but, you know, provides other services during the month? And we've had those conversations with police and fire. I mean, obviously, police and fire have the ability to react to what's going on when it happens. And sometimes we look at it as the messaging that we have to put out to the other businesses. So if you're a business downtown... So if you're a business downtown and you do not rely on Halloween traffic per se to support your business, and we are going to tell you that the road is going to close at noon, but there's an influx of people because all of a sudden it's October and it's sixty degrees out and more people are coming out early, and we close the street early, that's when we hear the feedback. So it's like, we've, you know, internally, we've had those discussions to say, okay, if we realize that we need to close XYZ street, but if we were to put out the messaging that the street's going to be closed at eleven o'clock, and stick to that, and if we end up closing it at noon, bonus, but if we end up closing it at ten, that's a detriment. So we internally have realized that, and we're looking at that to make sure that the messaging that we're putting out around specifically around street closures is understood and so can also be respectful of the businesses that totally do not rely on the foot traffic of Halloween, to understand that the messaging, when we put the messaging out on what the expectations are going to be around certain road closures, that we're going to try to stick to those as best we can, but also realizing the fact that the police chief and his personnel have the ultimate say on that beat relative to the crowds that may come. So we use our best judgment on that, but we also realize that the messaging around that is very important. I mean, obviously, I don't think, anecdotally, that we could build as many porta potty bathroom stalls as we have porta potties. It'd be nice if we could, but then the rationale would be that the only time that those porta potties are hundred percent utilized would be during the month of October. So it's a large expense to expend out, and then the location of them and where they'd be located. I was a big proponent of having the bathrooms put in the self hub or garage, as well as moving destination Salem or something else, it just happened to be destination Salem, because when Scratch Kitchen moved out of there, and we automated the gate at the self hub or garage, there was no physical presence in the garage other than someone who came to clean it once a day. With the building being active with people in it, and with all the improvements we've made to the building itself, with the bathrooms, the new stairwells, lighting, we've actually, and the cameras, we've actually seen a decrease in the number. I actually had this conversation earlier this week when I had the chief in. We've actually seen a decrease in the amount of calls that we're seeing for the garage itself with regards to incidents and vandalism. So I think it's important that we realize that, but I don't know if it's feasible to build that many bathrooms. I remember signing the, being the last one to sign the ticket that actually gets the porta potty contract get paid. And Alan, like, how many porta potties does that represent? I mean, I don't want to hold you to it, but it's a lot.
It's, we're up to about, towards the end of the month, we're up to like over seventy, I think, probably.
Over seventies, that would be over seventy individual stalls, of which, certain portions have the ADA compliance as well. So that would be a large undertaking too, but it's something to consider, and obviously it's something we will look at. But right now, I mean, I think just for the sheer placement of them and where some facility like that could be constructed, I mean, in the long run, we'll probably be better off, but short term, we're kind of locked into the porta potties, so. But it's always something to consider. Like I said, we had to listen, so. The barriers, I don't want to divulge where you were, because I know where you were, and I've seen those actually in operation over there. They're kind of neat. It's something we've looked at, actually for the pedestrian mall, especially on the end by the pen. By the end of the pen, we've actually looked at those. Yeah, we're talking about it. Because it would make more sense that if we had them, and obviously, logistically, that goes around, you know, what the infrastructure is underneath there as well as what's going on, but that's something we are looking at, especially on the entrance by the pen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to hand it over to Councilor Cohen for his question a little bit. I just wanted to thank Councilor Stott for her comments around a single person owning haunted happenings. I think this is pretty consistent feedback that we get constantly as counselors, and I think that's something that, I mean, we cannot allow, we can't rely on one person to not retire to run a smooth haunted happening. We really appreciate everything that, we rely on folks with lots of institutional knowledge and do a great job, but we are potentially one retirement and a couple people switching careers away from not having tons of institutional knowledge. And I wonder if someone were to say, next year, you're going to have a million people coming into your city, how are you going to manage it? I don't think, I don't think we would choose to organize things this way. I think we are at a point where we need to seriously consider having one person who owns this, so that we have a centralized vision and both hands talking to each other and not relying upon lots and lots of institutional knowledge. I think that's just for mayor candidates or here today, I think it's something that we do need to look at in the future as a community. I'll pass it over to Councilor Cohen and Councilor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Hapford, for not being a member of the committee. And I'm sorry if my comments echo anything that happened before I arrived. I have a comment and a question. Councilor Prozuski and I were talking about how, if you go to a Patriots game or out to a concert or anything that's really congested, you rarely if ever encounter a place that's as safe and as salamis. And so I want to commend the DPS and the police, fire, and all the first responders for your good work. My question is about the hocus pocus neighborhood, and so this would be for maybe Chief Miller and Lieutenant Tucker. How do you feel that the new road closed barriers work? I know there was maybe more than a couple hundred cars towed. I don't know if you could arrange something like every patrol car has to go down Ocean and up Clifton before they head back to the station? Or just like a blow up of a policeman standing in there? But if you could talk about what you did and what you think might improve the area in the future?
Thank you, Councilor. I think the, what we did this year for Ocean Avenue is to shut down all vehicle traffic. Now, I have the ability to do that. I don't have the ability to shut down pedestrian traffic, except for obviously very short periods of time for specific public safety reasons. But shutting, but closing it to all but residential traffic, I think had a, it had a beneficial effect. We did have fewer complaints this year, but it remains a tremendous draw for pedestrians. We used our bicycle patrol a little bit more this year, and I'm happy to report that we will increase our numbers of bicycle patrol. We're assuming you all agree, we're going to buy some more bicycles. But so those are all sort of matters of degrees, if you know what I mean. I honestly, I don't have a solution that's going to solve all the problems in that neighborhood. It remains a sort of unfortunate draw.
Councilor Merkel. Thank you, Chair Hapford. I'd like to offer some feedback on increasing the revenue with parking and make a comment on the satellite parking. Of course, we do want to find revenue where we can, you know, we're providing a lot of services for anybody that even just comes to downtown with security and infrastructure. And I would just want to be mindful that any of our efforts to collect fees for the satellite locations don't counter our efforts to get people to park outside the downtown. Like, you know, shuttles can be, it can be really problematic trying to collect a small fee on a show, just because, you know, how much can you charge? Yet there's so many ways to pay that I've seen when people take shuttles to events. Then it's like, I don't carry cash anymore, or I only have cash, or do you have Venmo? I have a credit card. It can be really quite a large job to even move the line along to get people into shuttles when you try to collect a fee, or if you have four children. It's very easy, as somebody said, it's tempting to just drive downtown and see if you can find somewhere. So I wouldn't want to do anything that says, I don't even want to bother that, look at the line, or four kids, if five dollars is going to add up, I'll try to keep going. So I just want, I just wanted to put that out there, to just kind of put some thought in before trying to increase revenue when we're trying to get people to park outside the downtown. Might be easier to charge for the parking in the lots that we established as opposed to shuttles. And also in regard to feedback, you know, feedback is always welcome. And, you know, outside of meetings, I get emails, we all do, so, you know, it's always helpful to get feedback. I'll offer some, I've gotten one example, and I think this is a good idea, someone saying, you know, the parking, that they put up the signs that it's residential through October first to October thirty first, now the crowds have swelled. So maybe those signs need to start a week early. And as we got the feedback tonight that the weekend after was really crowded, so maybe that could be extended, you know, ideas like that. Feedback is always welcome and helpful. I think that means I've said no.
Thank you, Chair. Great to be here tonight. Like, good comments. My question is, I don't know who had an answer for this, but as a former visitor on the line, and a family who is big and grow, grow, grow. My question is, how much growth do you anticipate that this Halloween of this season that we are in Salem is good? How much growth do you think that we can afford as a city? I remember when I was young, my family started growing, and me and my wife lived together, we need to be in house, we cannot afford to live in this small space. We know that Salem is into that point. Last, or how the growth was coming to us, my question to the people who plan, do you have any anticipation, or do you have any plan? How are you going to control the growth? Because every year that we see, we know how we started celebrating, now it's a big scale. What happened, what's going to happen if we see the growth continue to grow the way it is? What are we going to do? Are we going to buy another city so we can put people to come in, because we have people living here? We have a population problem at the same time. We have people getting into, and we know the concept of the growth. Anyone can tell me how much growth we anticipate for this year, and what we do, we continue to grow on the same path that we are right now.
Thank you, Chief. I think that's you. I don't think anyone has a crystal ball, but I keep telling people that, all the department heads that have been coming in over the last couple of weeks in all the meetings I've had, I keep looking for the magic one that somehow was taped underneath the desk somehow when Kim left, and I can't find the magic one. It doesn't exist. So when you look at growth, I mean, like, anything, anyone would have a business model, you would think that you would anticipate a certain amount of growth relative to inflation. Any business would look at that, but I think that when you look at the month of October, I think, you know, Councilor Merkel suggested that it starts early and seems to end a little later. I've had those preliminary discussions with David Kacharsky with an idea of maybe expanding on the resident, those stickers for that month. Maybe it does start sometime early or sometime later, because we're finding that those, the crowds, the crowds after Halloween seem to linger almost till right before Thanksgiving. But with regard to growth, I don't think, I think that last year, Kate and I were talking about this last week in the office, I think that when I, you know, I think Kate used the word hocus pocusitis. I think that last year, we hit a real critical amount because of hocus pocus two coming out. I also think that coming out of COVID, when you look at the travel numbers, a lot of people were traveling locally within the continental United States, especially in the Northeast region, so we saw a larger uptick in tourism that way. As we stated earlier, I think the critical mass last year was the long weekend in October, and some of that has to do with the weather. I mean, some things that are outside of our control, that some, even people that maybe potentially weren't thinking of coming to Salem. Some of the data that Kate shared with me is, a lot of those travels, decisions are impulse. So people impulsively say, okay, the weather looks great this weekend, we hear Salem's fun, let's go to Salem. And they have no plan, they have no destination, they have no tickets. We also can tell you right now, as I stand here in front of you today, every single hotel room and almost every short-term rental in the city of Salem was sold out already for the month of October. So they're going to come, and so we as a group have to address that and understand how we deal with that moving forward. I think a lot of it has to do around the messaging. I think a lot of it has to do with, you know, the understanding that it is impactful for us as a community that we take on this responsibility. We're the second largest Halloween destination, is that correct? In the world. The other ones in Europe, I want to say, I keep wanting to say Ireland, but it's not Ireland, is it Ireland? It's in Ireland, so I don't know this October, I may go to Ireland instead. But this is, we're the one that is for the whole month, and I think the servants are correct that we may have to look at it more as opposed to more than just October, it goes beyond, starts earlier and ends later. But I will just say, I've said it a hundred times already tonight, but I will say that this group of dedicated people over here, they react in the moment that they need to do, but they also are proactive in their response. If anyone wants to go down to the fire department and see the vehicles that they've created with these gators, that they've outfitted the gators with fire, with the fire extinguishers and equipment that they can go through a crowd, they can respond to a medical aid call, they can respond to somebody setting a trash pile on fire, whatever the emergency, and realizing that through their evaluation of what's transpired in years past is how they respond to things moving forward. And every single department here has done that. And they don't do it lightly, and sometimes, you know, I don't, when the question was raised, you know, because people want to understand what the, what the costs are, what the inferred costs are, what the expenses are, and, you know, as those numbers, as was on the chart, seem to trend towards each other, is traditionally where we looked at expenses and revenues. Obviously, the part that wasn't on that chart was some of the things we've talked about tonight, but as those grow closer, it's because we realize that we need to control the crowds more, and we need to expend more resources, both monetarily and physically, on the ability to control those crowds, to allow the event to happen. I can't say, I do not have, I would say, a modest increase, but I can't say that I anticipate, I don't think any of us would anticipate an increase like we saw this year, only because, as we stated, they think it was just a combination of a whole bunch of things that resulted in a really big year this past year, and that's why we're all here. So obviously, anyone's got any suggestions, we'll go with it.
Thank you. If there are no other questions from the councils, I would like to do public comment. So what we'll do is we'll call those folks up more of the time, starting from the front row, moving backwards, and then we'll go to the, to the online questions after that. If you can, it's your name and your address, and also if you could write your name and address on the sheet up at the podium, that would be appreciated. We're going to use the mic that's up there so that we can keep the mic over here. You will be heard in the room, and you'll be heard specifically on SATV and the folks at home. Again, let's keep it to the issue that we have here, avoid personalities. And if we can answer those questions, specific questions, if folks here are able to answer them, then we can bring you up to answer them, but not every question will have an answer. So first up.
Polly Wilbert, Seven Cedar Street. Just as a bit of context, for nearly a decade, I worked for a guy named David Mugar, who founded Boston's Fourth of July, and for nearly a decade, I worked for the team that put on Boston's Fourth of July annually, which, as many of you know, can draw up to five hundred thousand people for a night, if not two nights, on the Esplanade. So I have seen how. So I have seen how a large, single event is organized by a team of people, and the staff of the Boston Fourth of July was basically 10 people that worked year round. I think that there's a hidden fact that's not been highlighted here tonight. And I think the chief touched on it a little bit, which is that there are higher pay for professionals on the force. I think that's probably true in the fire department. As a result, because the OT is rising, our pensions are rising. And that quantifies over a long period of time. We need to try to quantify that so we understand what that hidden budget burden is for our city. I think that we understand that there are lanes, but I would call them silos. I'm sure that there are team meetings, but tonight, across town, the licensing board is likely issuing a liquor permit for 700 people on October 21st from 9:00 to noon on a Saturday in October, October 21st. I wonder whether that's done in conjunction with an understanding from other entities in the city of the impact of starting the day at 9:00 AM with liquor until noon. And yeah, it's a fitness group, but you're already saying your capacity is going to be 700 people. I think what other, the other thing that's not being quantified here tonight is the burden on the average citizen in Salem, and especially the people that live in the core of downtown. We talk about the parking violations and the toes. I think many times, those are quantifications of a blocked driveway, a blocked fire hydrant, obviously, parking where someone's not supposed to park, including resident parking. It's a quantification of the abuse of the citizens of Salem, especially in the core of the city. We need to understand that it's not a revenue production. It's part of a problem about how people in Salem who live in the core of downtown are abused. Our four funeral homes are all in the core of the city. If you die in October, the tradition is you want to have a wake on a Friday night and the funeral on the Saturday. Good luck. We see repetitively people deferring their memorials until November. If you have a kid who has a birthday in October, good luck. Very likely, your grandparents cannot get into Salem to attend a birthday party. And I have heard reports that people have been told to take their kids out of town to celebrate their birthday. If you work Monday through Friday, and you need to do errands for your life on the weekend, good luck. There are a handful of parking spaces at the library for 15 minutes. Try and go to the library on the weekend in October to get a book. Try and take your kid there. Good luck. I don't think we can quantify the sacrifice that a lot of people make for October, which I think benefits a small sector of our community. I would like us to compare the number of successful restaurants in Marblehead in a town that's half our size, has four yacht clubs and a golf course, all requiring memberships and minimums, and yet they have highly successful restaurants in their downtown. Look at the number of tour guides that we're licensing. Now they're coming from out of state to be licensed. Are we controlling that? I'm not sure that in this grand management of Salem in October and the shoulder weeks, that we're really cognizant of what we're doing in terms of providing additional capacity just for tours that, in many cases, clog up our sidewalks. It's, as we've talked about, hard to not walk in the street in the core of our city on the weekends, because there are tour groups of 25, 40 people clogging up the sidewalks. We will never have enough restrooms and parking spaces for what's happening on the weekends in October. I think we are at a point where we should not talk about haunted happenings at all. What we're at is a point where we should diversify about our great city through the other 11 months. Haunted happenings will continue as an echo for time. But it's now too big and too burdensome for our city to handle. Now, for the first time, I've heard that there are like 9,000 parking spaces in Salem, and the number of cars that we're getting is way beyond that. And we've got people who will come, and they will find a parking lot that's looking for $60. And guess what? They're going to drive around until they find someplace that's a lot less or illegal, and they're going to park there and play ticket roulette. The other thing is, I've now seen some of these private lots where there's not enough queue lane to handle the number of cars that are trying to go into those lots and park. So what happens is now the queue is down out into a public street, and that's further causing backups. What happened on the 15th of October, the Saturday, was horrifying. And I was out in the middle of it. I thought I knew every shortcut in Salem. I thought I knew how to traverse the city, because I live in the core of downtown. And it was impossible, and it was frightening. You could not move. Traffic was gridlocked. I know that fire and police will get ambulances through and fire trucks through. I know that. But what happened that day was dangerous. And all it would take is, I'm sure someone from New York City could tell us, is one person with evil intent to bring us to our knees. There's no way to preclude that. But the bigger the numbers, the more the percentage. I have communicated with the chair that I thought the way this meeting was posted was unfortunate. It did not really reflect that public comment was being sought. It was presented as reports from city department areas and Destination Salem. I think the number of people are here tonight, maybe there are a lot of people at home watching because of the impending snowstorm, but people are frustrated. And they deserve to be heard. And yes, there are lots of people with positive suggestions. But there are a lot of people that think this is out of control and that we're not benefiting from some kind of revenue calculation. If every hotel room and every short term rental is already full, our tax revenue from those sources is maxed. There are so many seats in the restaurants in Salem and the bars. That's probably maxed, too. I think we need to be looking at this and downsizing it or rightsizing it, because we have gotten way out of the box with what's appropriate, safe, and a reasonable relationship with the residents of this city. Thank you.
Anybody else who's interested?
Suzie Moulton, 98, Washington Square in Salem. I have a couple of comments and a question. My first comment is that haunted happenings is really a six week period. We need to recognize that. It's not just October, it is the last two weeks in September. For those of us that live in the downtown area, that is very noticeable. Secondly, there are costs that are crude, that can't easily be captured by the Anna Friedman data. There are costs to the Salem Common. The costs for the pedestrian traffic and the trucks that are parked and the vendors, they impact that space in terms of damage to the grass and the trees and the walkways, etc.
Suzie, if you're a little bit closer to the microphone so folks at home can hear you.
Should I start all over? Oh, good. I don't know if this works. So I just wanted to say that there are additional costs that are incurred for which revenue is not identified to fix those costs. I have a specific question. When Anna presented the revenue, which was great, I do believe that Destination Salem is funded by the city, right? So that is a cost that's not listed in the cost that you gave us. You gave us cost for porta potties and DPS, etc. I'm just, I'm not criticizing Destination Salem. I'm just saying that is another cost that needs to be factored in. And now I'm just speaking personally as a resident of Salem. Those six weeks are difficult. I also live in the downtown area. Friends cannot come to see me. I find it difficult to get out and around. When I moved to Salem in 2010, it was nowhere near as congested and busy as it is now. So I would also echo the thoughts to try and figure out how to manage it in a little smaller way, in a better way, etc. So I would echo some of the frustration that residents have, and I appreciate the time for this feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie.
Alan Hanscom, 82, Washington Square. So I've lived here since 1995, and very quickly, I learned that not to drive in October. And I can get away with that, because I live right next to the Common. So I got used to Octobers, and they weren't so bad. This past October, though, was different from all the others. It was really difficult. And a lot of things have already been mentioned, so I won't say them again. But I just wonder if maybe you need to back off on advertising. But on the other hand, I think they're going to come anyway. Like, because like you said, in 2020, during the pandemic, they came anyway. And so I don't know. I don't know what the answer is to that. And then the other thing I want to mention real quick is that I've already brought this up with Parks and Rec. But since all the departments are here tonight, I'm going to mention it again. And that is, well, first of all, the vendors on the Common, a much, much better job was done in October of preventing the tire tracks by putting mats down, and also just having the vendors on the weekends. And also rotating, rotating the tents. All that helped with that. The thing that we still get a lot of damage to the grass from was the food concessions, like fried dough and those other things at the west end of the Common. They were sitting on exposed roots to some of the endangered trees. And you can't see it now because of all the snow, but the grass was pretty much trampled on that west side in the same way. So I'm just hoping, I hope that Parks and Rec can do something about that. But if any other department can work on that as well, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. I do think it's important to just point out, as was already mentioned, but around the advertising, the reason we know how many folks we had coming into Salem was because of data from Destination Salem. The reason we're able to put out messaging saying, don't come without a plan this past year, and then in previous years, don't come at all around COVID, was because of Destination Salem. So there is a lot more function that happens around that. Anybody else want to give a public comment? Fuzzy? And thank you, Alan.
Fawaz Abu Sharq for Harrison Road, Salem. Fuzzy, as he called me. This one here? That's the one you liked, Jeff? First of all, my advice to Alan, do not retire, because even if you retire, they'll still call you, they'll still ask you. And it's not just Halloween, it's all year long. So keep making the money. God bless you. First thing, when I was looking at the balance sheet and stuff, there is something, it's my humble opinion, it's not about profit and loss. I think this is important, and to me, it's like the post office. It's not for profit, it's actually something we need. And the benefit, even if you don't see it in money, you see it in the long run in promoting the city and who we are and all these things. I think it has to be more about finding the balance between how we can bring all these people, how we can serve them, and at the same time, not inconvenience the people. And it's a long conversation and no want. There was no want before neither, so don't keep looking. Mayor McCarthy, God bless, first time I see you. And I think it's more about, maybe we look to other places with big events. I just happened to be away for almost two and a half months, and there is nothing bigger than Qatar 2022. If you think about half a million people in Halloween, that's the World Cup that just happened in Qatar in Doha. I happen to be in few other cities where big events happen. Something that they do during those busy times, no parking for outsiders. You're taking free shuttles or even shuttles for money in some places. But many of them, you park outside. If you're not from the city, if you're not from the area, you're not going to have to park there. Public parkings, and we do have, you know, intelligence, and we have smart park and all these things. What they do is, if you, you know, like you can, for certain places, you can do prepaid and pick certain times. And the way they solve the problem, I know you can overpark or whatever, the way they solve it, if you have 1,000 parking, they only give 900 permits. So this way, if 100 people, 10%, which is usually the average to them, I don't know. It might be different for Salem. But if somebody stays a little bit over or whatever, one, you're not going in without prepaid, that means you have a spot. Two, if somebody for any reason have to stay for a little bit, not too long, okay? You will have a place for others to come in. Just ideas. Again, there is no want. But the main thing, you do not disturb the people who are living in the area. And, you know, you can control it. Now with the people, every person, I mean, I'm talking third world, as we call them. I think we are the third world when I looked at their technology. Because when the police car drives by, they can tell where the car from. When the meter person is doing the ticket, they can tell the car, etc. So if you're not from the city, it's not we have parking or we don't. Simply do not park in those areas. And it doesn't have to be for all Salem. It could be just the downtown or the congested areas. So it's just the idea. I think what we all saying in the same way, we do want the benefit. It does give a huge benefit for the city. And I would not support anything to, I don't want to even say scale it down, because in the sense, it is going to keep growing, and it's going to grow every year. And it is going to be good for the city. Many businesses, even though it's not all city, many businesses, they have this time to basically make it or break it. And the more we help them to make it, on the long run, the more we're going to benefit. I just think we need to start a new vision about this. How to make the big balance in keeping life as normal as possible, whatever that is, but at the same time, keep the benefit going. We need to make it our people, our residents friendly and tourist friendly. And my humble opinion again, and this is going by many places, if there is a point where there is kind of clash, our people come first. It's just normal, it's our city. We own it. And yes, literally, we do own it, whether you own a house, whether you rent it, whether you live or whatever, whether you have a business, this is our city. But within reason and within respect and within keeping the general idea. But within reason and within respect and within keeping the general idea, we get the advantage. But I think it's a long conversation. We can look at many other places and there are many easy solutions that will satisfy everybody. Parking is going to be, and I do recommend what Counselor Merkel said. I think free, what do you call them, satellite parkings? I think the city should charge for that. 10 bucks, let it pay for the shuttles or for something. They all do. So that's one of the, the good ideas I heard it around. And I mean, it's a big conversation. I don't want to be spending a lot of time here. I already did as well. Thank you for listening and hopefully, you know, we will look at those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Fawaz. Anybody else want to give a public comment? Annie?
It's okay, go ahead.
No, no.
I'll finish it in a second. Thank you.
Hi, can you, is this low enough? How's that? Okay. Annie Harris, and I run a small nonprofit in Salem located at 10 Federal Street. And I'm also a resident. I live at 28 Chestnut Street. And I've, first of all, I think, I'm delighted you're having this hearing. And I think the numbers were great to see. And I'm encouraged that the losses, I thought we had a lot of losses. So I was encouraged to see some of the numbers tonight. It was great to see. And I generally have been a proponent for having haunted happenings. I remember when I moved to the city, there wasn't anything. In fact, we used to give a lovely Halloween party because nobody celebrated Halloween here. And that's obviously changed a lot. But this is the first year that I felt, wow, both as a, you know, someone who runs a business here and also as a resident, it was, it was really overwhelming. And so as, as a business, I mean, even my nonprofit over on Federal Street was impacted. It was just incredibly difficult to get employees here. It was sort of just this constant noise and din. The parking lots that we rent to, for employee parking, we were kicked out by 5:30 in the evening. I have employees that do some work on weekends. They couldn't park anywhere. It was really amazing. And I, and I worry about some of our other not, year-round businesses. Polly mentioned the funeral parlors, the service businesses, the haircutters, the hardware store, the paint store. Cheese shop is one of my favorites. I know from just, again, anecdotally talking to these people, they really had a bad month, a lot of these places. And it was just very, very tough. Their customers couldn't get there, their employees couldn't get there. So I just, I think we all know this, but I think it's really, really important to try to deal with that. We want these year-round businesses. A lot of us patronize them. You know, it's, I, it's, this was very important for, for the hotels and some of the restaurants. I think they're great. But I really want to make sure that we try to do what we can to help the year-round businesses also stay that, give us all the shops and everything in the, in the rest of the year. Because a lot of these ones that are really based so much on Halloween are certainly closed now and really won't open again until probably May or June. So to have vitality downtown. I think, so the impact on the residents, as has been mentioned tonight, was I think a lot of us did feel trapped in a way that I, you know, I didn't know before. I had to go grocery shopping very early in the morning. Also trapped by the walking tours. Walking tours were phenomenal. Now, I'm not right next to the downtown, but I'm close. And we had walking tours like I've never seen and the crowds were kind of amazing. There was a safety concern, I think, our police and fire and DPW did a fabulous job. But at some points, the crowds were enormous and it was worrisome. I think the resident survey asked a lot about what we felt about the city services and how the DPW and police did, and those were great. I think all of us thought they did a great job. They didn't, the survey didn't ask how we felt about, you know, what it happens in general, what its impact was. So the survey, I would suggest, you know, that should, that should be broader and really look at more of the issues. I think, I think I'd love to see a lot more direct benefit. I think the benefits aren't visible to residents. So for example, I'd, I'd love, I'd love to see us make more money. If we're going to keep doing haunted happenings, I'd like to see that direct benefits go into fixing the Common up. I'd like to see that after haunted happenings, we really plowed money back into the grass, into the trees there, into the flowers downtown, into fixing some of the, whatever. I think it would be, it would be helpful. But I also think that, you know, the mayor is very good about saying, so the buck stops here and we're in charge. But I think the question's about who's in charge. And we really need to take it serious in the city. This needs to be someone's full-time job to be the czar of haunted happenings if we're going to keep going with it. And I'm not sure there's any way not to keep going with it. I'd love to see it more controlled. But I think it's still going to be here. Halloween's become a huge event. And I also would like to see whether we, I think we also need to get some professional help on this. I'd like to see if we can get more from the vendors. I've been told we can't get anything from the street performers. But I think we should get some more professional help, some legal help, some other help to look at, what else can we do to maximize the revenue and the benefits, particularly from people who come and just use our city for six weeks? They come in, they make a lot of money. I think that's true of a lot of the walking tours too, I'm told. I'm not 100% sure. I know that Destination Salem has proposed some things, which would be great. But I think just, it's a huge deal. So maybe we can do more on that. And then more control. I know it's very difficult, but I think particularly the crowds and the walking tours have exploded. They're gigantic, they're all over the street. And I know we have some proposals and I hope we can push forward with those proposals on the size, the noise, the control. Over 25, having two people, maybe put a surcharge on their tickets, all of that. I really need to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Anybody else want to give a public comment? Gary?
Gary Gill, Ward 3. Okay. So I got a couple of ideas, but I want to give you something else before. I've been asking for four years now, from the corner of Bridge Street and Flint, all the way down past the tackle shop to the train station for public parking there with a paved area, white lines, extra revenue. I've been asking for that space for four years. To clean it all up along the train tracks, from the bait shop, get rid of the bait shop because it's just sitting there, it's literally rotten, rotting there on the tracks. Get rid of that, clean that all the way up down to Flint Street. Black tar it, put white lines, put some meters there. There's a, a long parking availability there for revenue. So that's what I wanted to bring up again for my fifth time. The other things for the city of Salem and the events and Halloween, it has gotten big. But we made it that big. We did it to ourselves. So now we're suffering the consequences. And the residents are the ones suffering the consequences. So you hear that from me tonight. But we did it to ourselves and now here we are. So we got to fix it. So it's no more a small little event for the city of Salem. It's a big event, since we are the second largest Halloween town now in the world, I think. So we have to take a different look at this and break it up into four weekends. Two adults' weekends, two kids' weekends. Have stages wherever you want to put them. Have designated shows or whatever it is to get that audience in and get them out. I have to agree with Fuzzy. I can't believe I'm doing it after all this time. But the parking and all of that, we can't allow even us as a city and residents to use cars if we're not going to ask the other people not to come in with their cars. It's kind of selfish. So the whole fact of the city of Salem, we're making it a walkable city all over the place with our bike paths, we're thinking healthy, we're eating healthy, we're doing this. Why can't we take the initiative and start walking ourself and doing everything early in the morning? Go to the store, do all your errands, be prepared, like the Boy Scout that I was when I was a kid. Be prepared at all times for anything. Because you saw what happened the last couple of years because of COVID. And they are right. People were so locked up, they wanted to get out. They wanted to have fun and we saw it. But our businesses needed it. They need that money to survive so you can have a beautiful city to brag about, to have your people come in, your relatives come in, eat at our nice restaurants, go out, enjoy the shoreline, walk all of it. As Kim Driscoll used to say, "It's only eight square foot miles all the way around." So let's take advantage of it for ourselves, our health and everything else, and practice what we preach. If we want people to come into our city, make them take transit. Make them take the buses. Make them leave early, have free transit. That's the gig. But that's what I'm talking about. So you're going to have to think of this, no more small little town little thing, it's a big thing. Break it up into four weekends, have two weekends as adult entertainment, whatever that could be, beer parties, whatever, music. But also keep the kids in mind and have two weekends for kids. Awesome.
Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
John, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Hello, everyone. John Andrews, 265 Essex. Just a couple of things. I've pretty much talked to everyone in this room at some point about October and haunted happenings at length. So I'm sorry, except for Polly, I don't know you, Polly. I was really interested, Ty, when you started about things that didn't show up in the presentation. So there was a couple of things that I just wanted to address there. Especially full transparency, I'm on the marketing committee with Kate. And having an organization that controls the narrative of the city beyond what we talk about is very important. I don't know how many social media people are here, but I can guarantee you that there are millions of comments and likes about Salem and visiting Salem that have nothing to do with Kate. We need something to control that narrative and something to tell people what they should be doing when they get here. And I just cannot impress how important that that role is. I've seen it get out of hand in Facebook groups and TikTok and social media and Instagram. It's very dangerous. I've seen misinformation, I've seen bad things, I've seen dangerous things. And there's always someone at the table that can offset that. So I think that was a big one. Of course, I'm going to lean into the other segment of businesses that no one really talks about that much, which is the artisans and the makers and the performers and the creators that benefit from this month greatly. There's also a huge trickle. I don't think if the revenues weren't here, we would see support as much as we do from the small business community for the rest of the 11 festivals that we do throughout the year, whether it's Film Fest, All Things We Love, Heritage Days, Film Fest, Jazz Fest, all these things that we all want through the rest of the year. The businesses are not going to be able to support them the way they do now without the increase in revenue. And I'd be really hesitant to see that get kind of messed up anyway. The other thing too, that I noticed last year, and I have to shout out to the chief and the chief and to Alan, communications have started way earlier. Conversations have started way earlier. This is awesome. Like, I love this. Yes, I thought this room was going to be packed, just like some other folks said. But I, I think it's a start and it's, it's a good transparent start to a conversation. I've already had like seven meetings about haunted happenings internally and with the city and with partners. That's unprecedented for me. I've been actively involved with this for about six years now. So I really appreciate people taking the time and opening up their doors to say, yes, we do need to have these conversations earlier. But one of the things that I've noticed, dealing with a lot of the small business community, we represent about 200 businesses in the community right now. They have a lot of the data that you need that's not anecdotal about trends. And I think we should talk to our small business community, our tour groups, and really, we could get a better understanding of what we're going to see. Is it going to, is it going to peak? Is it going to rise? Is the, is the revenue rising? Last year, we were surprised the businesses weren't. They knew. They absolutely knew it was coming. They all said, "How did you not know it was coming? I could have told you in my sales revenue data." So I think just having more conversations and open conversations with the businesses and the people that are on the ground. I bet you Tammy could tell you exactly who's coming into this town and what type of volume is happening. So having more of those conversations with the, the other lived knowledge experience beyond Alan, there's a lot of people that can really help with this in general. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other comment in the room, or is it all the way online? Okay, if you're listening at home and you'd like to give a public comment, please raise your hand and I will allow you to speak. Going once, twice, okay. Nobody at home? Any further comment and further comment from the council? Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair Hathaway. I just want to take a moment for, to thank you for, for all the work you did in this meeting. And I want to thank the residents. It does, as we've heard comments tonight, and in addition to thanking all the departments that are here that work so hard, the residents for all the patience and a lot of their participation. We have so many volunteers for Salem Main Streets and the patience they keep. And just as I walk around, the residents randomly giving assistance to tourists that are lost or studying a map and can't figure it out. So I'm a downtown resident as well, I, and, but all the residents, not even just downtown, for every, all the residents of Salem. It's appreciated, the team effort that that is haunted happenings with our department heads and our residents and everybody that works hard. That's why people keep coming and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Merkel. I also think to recognize Counselor Stopp bringing this order forward at the end of last year. I think this is an important conversation on that vote, those comments. And thank the city employees for everyone who showed up here today. I think this is a great start to this conversation. Appreciate the preparation. If there's further comment, I'll take a motion from the committee. Was there another comment?
I'll move to keep this in committee. Please, Alan.
Thank you. Being a member of the committee, I just wanted to make that comment and say thank you for holding this large meeting. I didn't know what you were going to make, but I think this was a great conversation this evening. I appreciate all the transparency and I think there are a lot more conversations that can happen. I don't necessarily know if like all of those conversations belong in this committee, but I think in our transitional time that we're in right now, it's a good spot to hold these conversations and to be kind of that guiding group to, to help at least hold space, to have those conversations, to figure out what the next steps are. I put in this order and I got a lot of, well, what are you expecting from this meeting? Honestly, I don't know. But I think we're up, start getting the information, getting the feedback and continuing to keep it transparent. So I appreciate continuing those with the committee. I just, but the motion was already being answered, I just wanted to throw that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I, does the Chair recognize Gary Gill?
I just got a question to follow up though. Sorry. So if, if this, if you want to, I have to fight right there.
So since this was the first one, is there going to be more? And is it going to be scheduled to where it could be open?
So this is, as this is a regular committee meeting, this is remaining in committee. That'll be the recommendation that goes back to the city council. So if at any point in the future, community economic development wants to bring this forward again, the order is already in committee until we discharge it. So it will likely remain in committee throughout the year.
Okay, because...
If we do decide to vote yes on Counselor Morcello's motion.
Okay, because... Okay, because, uh, to say, add to what John's saying, I really do think that the store owners and businesses really should be a part of this on a smaller scale, maybe a discussion where you can really hear and see numbers as far as visitors into their store actually, and know the businesses of what you're supporting as far as the city. If there's no relationship between businesses and, and small businesses or all the businesses with you guys of the twelve that sit at that desk, there's no community really, there's, I mean, who are you representing?
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Chair, um, I think I'll just make one last, I might make a couple quicker comments. First, again, my thanks and gratitude, especially to all of the city employees who came in tonight, um, I wanna acknowledge that, um, there are a lot of hard questions that need really thoughtful answers, and I think as Counselor Stock said, now is the right time, the ripe time to be asking them and addressing them. I think there's been a feeling for a long time that if it ain't broke, it doesn't need to be fixed, and I think that that comes from a place of needing to execute under great duress, right? And I think I wanna acknowledge that, that, that that's never without a lot of invested time, energy and thought, and also, I think this is a great opportunity to address some really hard questions that are out there, right, they're just floating out there. So, uh, again, my gratitude to you all for being here tonight, um, being willing to have these conversations, I do agree, I think it's the start, um, I definitely will be voting to keep it in committee so that we can, um, have additional conversations, hopefully with small business owners, um, and I think more residents and, and additional resident engagement. Um, one offer question, I just wanna throw out there, I'm looking at the acting mayor, I, I think it's difficult that one office and predominantly one person with a number of other department heads kind of run this shindig, and I think that it, I would love and welcome the opportunity to have more conversations about potential ideas or potential solutions, and that includes reasons why those ideas and solutions that are floating around the city might not work, right? Um, and so I just offer that to you as the word to Counselor, um, not on behalf of the Chair, but I'm sure that he'd be definitely willing to continue this conversation, and even if we picked this up multiple times around very specific issues, right, there may be multiple conversations in the future around this, um, that haven't been set in a minute, should I hand it back to Counselor Rosillo to finish her motion?
Okay. Hi, okay. So my motion is to keep this in, in committee, and I was going to add that I think our next meeting should be to meet with small businesses, this is the Community and Economic Development Subcommittee, and this is where the discussion should happen. Um, I also don't wanna lose the opportunity to say that, um, when I had my comment period before, I didn't point out the good things that happened this year, and that is, the city was really clean, like, I've never seen, I'm looking at Ray right now, a phenomenal job with litter, serious. And, and now I'll jump into the chief, 'cause he's looking a little left out right now. Uh, the ticket in toes were incredible, um, constant all weekend, um, it, it was, it, it was noticed by residents, and I didn't say it though, I need to say it, okay. Um, and then the last one I was gonna say was safety, I remember haunted happenings from years and years ago, and I never feel unsafe walking downtown in the midst of all the chaos, I might be uncomfortable with the masses on the Essex Mall, but I avoid that just 'cause I don't like that many people, but, um, that wasn't a general comment, that was just in that closed space, but generally, I think for the number of people, this is a very safe event that happens and spans an entire month, and so, yeah, kudos, kudos in this regard, um, so I think we can keep this in committee, there's gonna be more co- more questions, I have lots more questions, but I think starting with the small businesses is the way to go.
We have a second from Counselor Dominguez, so we'll take a vote, all in favor of leaving this in committee? And all of those is here, so we have, uh, five members voting, five in favor of leaving this in committee, we have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor? And we adjourn, thank you, everybody.